All right, it's seven o'clock. Magic time for the Leonard Village Council. This is the regular meeting of the Leonard Village Council. Thank you for attending. Today is September 11th, 2017. And we also recognize that today is one of the reminders of the sadder times of 9/11. And we blew our flag at half-mast in honor as the President corrected. And our hearts and minds still go up to those people. So with that, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a brief invocation.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful that we can meet again for this community. We pray for those in Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, Houston. And just so grateful that we are not struggling with that. In your name we pray that you will guide our decisions this evening. Amen.
Okay, we have a roll call for the attendance of the Village Council.
President McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Sotheby?
Here.
Mr. Ameranti?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Ameranti, excuse us. Also, for the record, please note that both Officers Clerk Cindy Grosskopf and Treasurer Judy Verst are present. Okay. The minutes of the August 14th regular meeting have been provided. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections? If none, a motion to approve the minutes would be in order.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes of August 14th, 2017, regular meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, the minutes of the August 31st special meeting are present. Any questions, changes, or corrections on those? If none, a motion to receive and approve those minutes would be in order as well.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 31st.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of August 31st, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, council has before it a proposed agenda. Are there any questions, additions, changes? If none, a motion to approve the agenda would be in order.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
On the favor of the motion to approve the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, council has the treasurer's report for the village for August. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections? If none, a motion to receive and file the approved report would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and approve the report. I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sotheby?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Very good. Council has before it the accounts payable for August. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections? If none, a motion to pay the bills in the amount stipulated would be in order.
I make a motion that we pay the bills. In the general fund, $5,976.58. The major fund, $337.29. And in the local fund, $998.33.
I'll second.
Okay, are there any questions on the motion to pay the bills for August? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please?
President McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sotheby?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Very good. Moving on then to public comment. Does anybody here care to speak to the Village Council at this time? If on any item that's not on the agenda? Yes. Please identify yourself.
I'm Dave Rafford, and I've got a, I'm watching them, or I wasn't watching, but they're putting in a drain west of town here. And I noticed it was a solid pipe. And we're trying to lower our water table, and solid pipe won't do that. I just wondered why they chose solid pipe rather than perforated pipe. They do have a good base to put the pipe down. That's a hydroic soil, which means it holds water most of the, well, always. It's sebo, it's called sebo loam. It's basically blue clay. It's the kind of soil we put down in a dump. That's the very first thing when they're building a dump, you put that soil down. Because not much of liquid penetrates that. And half of that left side up to the railroad tracks is that loam. And that's not going to lower the water table in that area by putting a solid pipe. I just wondered why they would choose that. Maybe you don't know the answer.
Yeah, the answer is, is that we had the engineers look at it. They said, replace, replace what's there. What was there was solid clay pipe. So that's, we're replacing it with solid plastic pipe. The intent of the local drains is to drain water from the surface, to keep roads and yards free of water as much as possible. We're not trying to dry out the village. That's pretty much an impossible task.
No, you wouldn't. But I think our water table's about three feet here.
Okay.
And, you know, you do what you want. I know that when it came through the Plaza Street to Patterson's property, and there was a, I don't know if that was a solid pipe, I think it was. But ever since there, I have a puddle of water that remains in that little area that isn't sand. There's a clay area there and that.
I remember that pond from years ago.
It seems to be bigger now since that was put in.
It's always been pouring rain.
Yeah, yeah, there's a little section of clay that's in there. I just wondered if that's the best method to go. I don't think it is.
Well, I know a few years ago, we replaced the pipe over here on Division. And it was the corrugated pipe that was in there with holes. And that pipe was three-quarter full of road gravel. That's why we put solid in there.
Because if you maintain it and have a proper slope, it should take care of itself. But yes, you do have to flush them out every once in a while.
Yeah, Mike?
From what I was told, when they covered that ditch up along Whitehead and across the Zurich property, they put cement tile down. And before they could even cover enough, the tiles had moved and they were standing straight up and down. They tried putting bales of straw underneath it. Finally, I guess they had to put one section of pipe in there, the solid pipe, in the same Whitehead Street. And as far as perforating, that's the problem. We have, and we did uncover it, perforate it, and it's filled up with mud is the problem.
Yeah, it will. It needs to be maintained.
Okay, anybody else care to address the council?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, identify yourself, please.
My name is Bruce Hall.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of Desmond Borough Real. I mailed a village letter, basically a letter asking for permission or what you guys' uptake for changing the village's policy on sale of all private lots to allow such a business like a bar to open up here right next door. My question is, I've not heard anything back from the council or anything at all in regards to what you guys are positioning. And that type of thing, I mean, there's a number of direction from the U.S. Attorney's Office to be more sedentary. I have work to take.
You were at the meeting at which the council was given the opportunity. They had previously been provided with your letter. We're not obligated to take any action, and we have chosen not to take any action.
Okay, so that's my question. Do you want to go ahead and begin litigation?
Whatever.
Just I was.
Is there anything else that you want to talk to the council about? Is there anything else you'd like to talk to the council about?
No.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure.
Thanks for stopping in.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other further public comment, we'll go on to new business. We did receive a community development block grant application, and we did authorize To this point, we have not gotten, did we get any bids, Judy?
You know, I didn't look up when I was up there tonight.
But I don't believe we have. So that's still open. As far as that goes, I probably should have put that under old business, actually. And then Oakland County is offering a free service to the village called Digital Pictometry, which would be available along with the land, the map atlas that the village currently enjoys through the county. In order for us to take advantage of it, we have to pass a resolution approving the village as availing ourselves of that service. So at this time, I'm asking for the council to approve the village president to enter into the agreements and resolutions necessary to obtain that service for, at no cost, for the village.
Payments for?
Pardon?
Payments for what?
There's no payments.
He asked, what's it for?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. It's for looking at digital imagery and whatever the county has in its servers as far as property. They have different services, et cetera, that are available to communities. So this would be just another one.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying.
So is there a motion, then, to authorize the village to take advantage of this service?
I make a motion to authorize the president to take advantage of this.
I'll second that.
Is there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the president to enter into the agreements necessary to obtain the pictometry application for the village? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, under old business, Elmwood Street project update. Well, a lot has been happening. The village, we were able to sell the municipal bond. Oxford Bank has bid and agreed to purchase it. It will be for $150,000 as we originally planned. The interest rate will be 4.62 over 15 years, which was a little bit more than a little bit higher than what we had hoped for. But the bank's feelings were that they're financially, they're not, it's a small bond. They're not getting any real benefit from it because of the low amount, so they put a higher interest rate on it than a lot of the other municipal bond buyers probably would have. And given the tight timelines that we're under, even Chase, who I spoke with again today, they couldn't, it wouldn't, it just wouldn't work out for us. So I did authorize the financial people to go ahead and enter into that agreement and sell the bond to them.
Shame on Oxford Bank, though. They've been handling this account for many, many years.
Yeah. They have new management.
I know.
I have to say, I was, I was a little shocked and disappointed, but I think we could have had better communication from our financial advisors as well. And I think that would have, and we would have done this in a more timely manner, maybe started it a little sooner rather than waiting till. We save money by not having to make extra payments by getting the bond later in the year. But the downside is, is we ran out of time as far as the project timeline goes. So, but I think, you know, we'll manage it and work it out. It'll cost us, what did I say, 500 extra a year approximately for this interest rate. Okay, what else about Elmwood Street? You have in front of you a progress schedule. There's, beginning actually Thursday is the first day of work where they will set up the mobilization, traffic control, and detours will be started on Thursday, the 14th. And then the 16th, they're going to be making, starting sidewalk work. And 18th, they're going to start storm sewer repairs, including the, it'll be at the north end of the sewer that we're, the local drain that we're currently working on. And then they're going to be removing concrete, putting concrete in. And then the October 3rd is the big day when they'll be coming in and milling and crushing and shaping the actual street. And then they'll be doing paving about a week later, and then...
Close down any of the road, period?
No, the road, the residents and employees, the schools will all have access throughout. The exception may be when they're actually doing the milling and then the paving, where they will have to close lanes. But they will manage traffic control to keep, keep the traffic flowing. But it will be inconvenient and take time, and it'll probably be a couple days of that for each process. And then they'll, I guess the best part is, is that it'll be drivable by October 13th, and they expect to be done by October 13th, although the contract will be held open until till May of 2018, to make sure that all of the turf re-establishment is accomplished. So that's pretty much it. It's a busy month. I think it'll be nice to get it in and, get it in and out, but I think it's a, it's a lot to get done. So it'll probably be dusty and busy on Elmwood Street.
We're going right from the light out?
We're going from Whitehead Street to Forest Street, and then jumping over Forest. We're not doing anything on that intersection. Well, we are doing some curbing on the south side of, but it will, it will begin kind of where the Forest Street project left off. And we'll be replacing all the curbing and sidewalk in front of the post office from that intersection down to the end of the post office property. And then they'll be doing some curbing and drain structures, East Street, Division, North Division Street, down through there. And then around the mill as well. So it's going to be busy. And what else do I need to explain? We got the funding, we signed, oh, the, the row engineering gave us a price that was exactly the same as it was in the construction estimates, even though the project increased in value by a hundred and some thousand dollars, of which normally they, as you saw in your data or your bid specs, they know, it's usually right between 13 and 15 percent of the, of the construction costs. They kept, I think in light of the fact that they missed the mark and underestimated that they were, they absorbed that difference. So the price is right around 60, I think 67, 69,000 dollars. So I felt comfortable with that. That helped us out.
Well, yeah.
So that's a $20,000 or so savings, so. And I think that covers it, unless you have any questions. Does anybody have any questions on the project?
Are we going to fix any sidewalks?
Right now, just across the street, the post office and along there.
Nothing down this, where it's humped up down here?
No, no, we're going to have to do that on our own, Larry. It was just too expensive.
I thought we were going to do that, too, so.
No, it turns out Davis Bacon applies. So it was just, it added a huge amount of money to the cost of the project. And we're still trying to thin it a little bit. There's a new, MDOT hasn't, this, an aside, that MDOT has a new regulation this year that if you're, if you're working on sidewalks, you have to provide alternative access for pedestrians. Well, it's costing us almost $30,000 for alternate access. But we're working with the MDOT representative and explaining to him that, you know, this, we're talking about, you know, 150 feet, 200 feet of sidewalk versus, you know, it's not a heavily traveled sidewalk. So we'll see, we're hoping to address that a little more front, have it be a little bit more financially frugal. Okay, and then the main topic tonight is, under old business, is Whitehead Street drains. If you haven't been down there, you can see that they did start this morning doing the actual physical construction, although last week I met with the engineers and we did discuss that, that project as well. And we were coordinating the two together. There is going to be curbing put on the south side of Whitehead and Elmwood Street, and they are putting a drain in there. So they are going to connect the new drain that we're putting in to that new catch basin. And it'll be basically kind of like mirror image of what's on the east side of there. There's already a drain and a curb there. They're just going to flop it over, and there'll be a mirror to clean up that intersection and move the water where you want it to go, rather than having it just run off the road into, onto the property.
I have one problem with that down there on Whitehead and Division. These big trucks with long trailers, when they go to go around that corner because other traffic has been, they come right over top of it.
Right. Yeah, and that is one of the, we are fixing that. We're putting a small appliance there, so to speak. It's going to be a concrete pad with some, around the culvert, and then the culvert will sit on that, and then there's, they're going to put a great structure over it, just to keep the big stuff from going in there. But the contractor did point that out, and he said, you're going to have to do something because those trucks are going to, but the question is, is what do we do?
I don't know.
That's, that's the real crux of the problem. We can't, I don't think we want to put big rocks there or anything, although it's a possibility.
They're going to destroy anything you put in there. That's what's, what's going to happen eventually.
Well, it may be a guardrail. We may have to put a section of guardrail there.
That works, yeah.
Just so that they can't drive over it or, and straighten. Or, I was thinking about it today, we could restrict commercial traffic on those, on those roads, on those local roads.
But then you come when you're fireman social, and you have everything going down that road, you're going to have to open it up again.
Well, that's a limited time, though.
I know, but that, where that is and the way it is, so sharp and close, you're never going to get them big trucks to go around.
I think they made a mistake with the curbing. That's my opinion when they put it in there in the first place, because...
Curbing where, Chuck?
Are we talking?
No, I'm talking back on Whitehead.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking down here.
No.
Okay.
It would be on Division and...
Division and Whitehead, right there, that corner.
Division and Whitehead is what I was talking about.
Okay.
And then the trucks come up Whitehead and make a right turn to go to the store here. That's basically, the delivery trucks all do that because the alternative is, is they have to turn left here and then make a U-turn somewhere to get, to serve the store.
And they can't make that corner because it's so tight.
And they don't want to go down to Mike Street because, West Street, because that hill, you know, those trucks, they just, it's no fun.
Yeah, I can see where that would be.
Actually, where the trailers go across the lawn as part of the actual roadway, the road is about 60 foot wide, the right of it.
Oh, right.
The road is only 40 foot.
Right.
Yeah.
So we are going to have to deal with that. I know in the past, past DPW guys have put those portable barricades up on top of them, but they get driven over, and then, we've got three of them down in the garage. Don tells me that they're trash. I don't know why he's saving them, but that doesn't work. It's not effective. So we're going to have to do something there.
It's going to have to be a permanent shock. And you might have to put up signs and say, no large trucks.
So as far as the project itself goes, we did hit a hiccup today. Actually, several hiccups. One of the, one of them was, was that the drain tiles had disintegrated to the point where they, they basically weren't there in one section of the, in the lawn section. And so they had, they had been following the tiles that were there until, they probably did what Mike said, they just disappeared. They were so soft and wet, they just, they're gone. So, so now they have to restart, they have to realign the trench in order to put the new, the new pipe in. And at the south end, when they removed the drain structure, the grate structure, they found a 20, a 20, 24-inch culvert, steel culvert, that was full to within four, six inches of the top. Don said he didn't even realize it was there. Don's our DPW guy. And Don said he didn't realize it was there, and that they, even though they had power rotted to the west from that northern catch basin, they didn't realize that the water flow was from the south, southeast corner, across White, across Whitehead to the southwest corner, and then from the southwest corner, north underneath Division Street again, into that corner catch basin, which then has the pipe coming that we were just talking about on the northeast corner. So the bottom line is, is that those pipes, the two pipes are full. There's, there's, and if we, in putting in our new drain structure, if we don't clean those pipes out, the water's going to fill that structure back up and it's going to fill, we're putting a 10-inch pipe in there from, from that area to the middle drain catch basin, where all the water dumps into the county drain. So we have two choices. We can either hire a jet fat to come in and clean that out, which Don says it's probably a four to six-hour job at least. Or we can just block those drains to keep water from going in them, and then try and fix it next year or whatever. But meanwhile, that means that no water's going to be draining from that intersection or those properties unless it drains over the road and then through some, through the backyards to the next drain to the north, which does not seem like a very, it's not the right way to do it. They don't want it, the contractor doesn't want to do it that way, and I can understand why, because then if we have problems, we're calling him back saying, well, the drains flood, you know, well, that, he knows why, and we know why. So Judy, did you, did you happen to find out how much we spent the last time?
It was $2,300.
Yeah. So we're looking at having to hire the power-rotting company again to come out. And I told Judy I didn't think we could afford it, but you know Judy, she loves to spend money, so, so I shouldn't kid about it. But she and I did talk about it, and we could, we could take the money out of the carryover, the reserves, so to speak, and then hopefully make it, make it through and get that money back next year, like when, after we get done with our budget, we can refund it. But that's really, that's the right thing to do.
It needs to be done.
But I didn't realize it was $2,300. I thought it was less than that, but...
But that was eight hours' work. They can get it done in...
I think it's safe to assume that if you're at six hours, you're probably gonna charge for a full day.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But if they go for four, you might get it for half price. You never know, depending what, how fast and how good they can do it.
Part of the thing is too, is we, we're gonna try and get them out right away versus at their...
Convenience.
You know, so it's gonna be hard to dicker for four hours and then tell them that, uh, you know, we need them right now. Yeah, so. But I, but, um, if Judy's comfortable, I'm comfortable with taking it from the general. But that's not, that's not a happy thought, you know, it's, it's totally...
What else do we have?
Unexpected. Well, we've, we've already rated the budget about as much as we can for the Elmwood Street project, so I'm, uh, it's the only way I see that we can do it.
Yeah.
So I guess a motion to that effect, um, with, uh, not to exceed, I guess, number on it would probably be the best way to go. And then will, will you take money, uh, from the general, from the, uh, reserves?
Well, this will alleviate a lot of other problems that we've had thus far for many years.
It's, it's been a tough year because we have done a lot of work. DPW, road, building, and, and it was all needed. I just don't think, I certainly didn't think that it would amount, the problems would cause the bumps that we've seen. So does the council want to plug it or clean it out? That's kinda where we are.
If you plug it, you're gonna go back and clean it out anyway. You're gonna redo the job.
Yeah, we risk plugging up the new stuff.
Right, so you might as well clean it out.
And another year the clean out might cost more.
Yeah.
Exactly. I'd like to make a motion to solicit a quotation to get the power rotted with a not to exceed of $2,300 or $2,500, just because we're gonna do it on short notice.
I'll second that motion.
I'm okay with that. Okay, so who's supported?
Char.
Char.
Okay. So we're talking about, uh, not to exceed $2,500 to perform the jet rotting work. And we're gonna use the same vendor that we used previously because they were still significantly less than the other two bidders that we did get. So are there any questions on the motion? Judy, do we need to say from reserves on there in the motion?
Yeah, we probably should.
Yeah. So that would come from reserves? Are you okay with that, Al? Char?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any questions? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote then, please. To authorize not to exceed $2,500 for power rotting the Whitehead, uh, Division Street culverts.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutherby?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, President's Report. Um, I don't believe we had any new Freedom of Information Act requests. Um, we, I am currently processing, Judy and I are working on the, uh, the, uh, application for a roof, trying to get those bids in. In ordinance enforcement, um, we still have four. West Elmwood has not finished their permits yet. And also, um, I had a complaint about, uh, 4285 Forest Street, the junk and, and illegal construction. There was building a garage without a permit. So I went down and talked to them and they agreed that they would get a permit. And they were unaware that the village had garbage service. So they put quite a pile out there the next day. And it, uh, really helped make the place, place look better. So that's, that's a positive thing.
It does look a little better.
Yeah. Okay, um, beyond that, I don't think I have anything further. So with that, uh, Summer Festival Committee, I think, uh, we're in pretty good shape there. Uh, there is a Texas Hold'em coming up that I'm aware of, but don't ask, it's, I think it's in October.
Right, the 6th, something like that.
Yeah, it's beginning of October.
Okay. Anything else, Katie, what I forgot? Anything?
The camp's in the winter now, it seems, so...
Yeah, November, right. Okay, Cable Commission, um, Char?
You were at the meeting. It wasn't, um, they were just discussion on location. And, uh, the, I guess the consensus is that they will go with a new facility.
Yeah, they, they're exploring, uh, using the Seymour Lake Township Park, which the Park and Rec, uh, Parks and Recreation for Oxford Township just moved into that kind of a rehabilitated facility there. And had, they had offered the, uh, the Cable, the Cable Commission the opportunity to develop a, a building there as well. And as it turns out with their assistance. So right now, I believe, what are they doing? They're exploring the costs?
Yes.
And, uh, they're investigating what it, what it will actually cost to do it there. By, uh, Parks and Rec is gonna work with them and talk to the contractors and stuff.
Because they'll already be there. They figure that there's a cost savings to just go right ahead with what they're, and the wiring, everything would all be done once instead of coming back a second time.
Right. Right, the, um, the, there were, there were actually two alternatives. One was to remain where they were, which didn't seem to be the most popular idea. And then the other idea, Village of Oxford had offered, um, what the, uh, the old township offices and also an option, optional extra area for where the Parks and Recreation Department had been. Uh, the, the sticking point was that, uh, the building is badly in need of rehabilitation in those areas. There was questions about mildew, dust.
In the old part.
In the old part, right.
Not where Parks and Rec just were.
Okay, but, okay, see, that wasn't clear.
There was a reason for that.
Okay. Why is that?
All politics.
Oh, okay. So, um, but regardless, I think they would've, they would've wanted the extra room. I don't...
Well, what the issue is that they have, they don't wanna have to call, haul their cameras in and out all the time. And if they go to the Seymour Lake facility, they're also planning to build a garage and that van would be in a garage and the cameras wouldn't have to go back and forth all the time. So that's pretty much what I understand the issue is. At the Oxford location, there isn't a place for the van. And so, um, at, even securing it at night would be a challenge.
Even though it's next to a police department?
Even though.
Well, the bottom line is, is that it, there, it appears that they're moving in that direction to, to build and to, uh, create their own facility. But I don't think it's written in stone yet.
No.
We're gonna get some numbers and figure things out, so. Decorating Committee?
No.
Larry? Planning Commission? Um, I haven't heard anything. So we'll just, uh, we don't have anything actionable. We haven't gotten any requests, Judy, right? So we'll leave it on the books and then if they, if Leslie or wants to cancel. I don't know if, uh, Debbie may not be avail, available and Sherry may not be available because we just haven't heard. So, um, it's gonna be another tough call. So, Polly and Trail, we have a meeting next, uh, not this coming Wednesday, but the following Wednesday. Um, been a lot going on. If you've been on the trail, um, the logging activities south of the village are completed, but they have not restored the property. It's, it's quite a mess on the trail property. And we recently, uh, over the weekend, we had a volunteer bring his backhoe down. We replaced the culvert underneath the, just south of Boardman Road where that pond floods on Alzner's property.
Yeah.
So now we have a nice clean culvert. The water's drained down. It's, the trail's getting really nice and hard up there, so should be good. And we ditched on one side to drain the water to the, to the culvert rather than have it run away from it when it gets full, so. So anyway, there's a meeting next Wednesday. And then, uh, Main Street, I don't think we have anything there, do we, Char? As far as there's a...
Judy and I went to a meeting for them, but, uh, what was it? Uh, planners gathering, which we found interesting, but, uh, wasn't a whole lot of benefit for the Village of Leonard. But we had a nice time. And, uh, I'm going to the, um, Historical Conference Friday down in South Lyon.
Oh, okay. See, see, let me know if they talk about the mill at all that they lost. Just such a con- contradiction.
It just, it breaks my heart when people just say, tear it down, tear it down.
Okay, uh, Village Park. Um, anything going on, Mike? Do we have a meeting?
Nothing, no.
Okay.
Well, we should have a meeting this week, but if there, we don't know if there's anything to discuss if we have a meeting.
Yeah, I, the grass is cut, the tra, the trails are clear, um...
And nothing has to be wrapped up for winter yet.
Yeah, it's kinda early for that.
What you, I, well, I was gonna say, uh, Halloween is coming up and we did have a very nice event last year. That might be something to think about. Nice family event.
Think we could put it together in October, wait till October?
We can, that...
I mean, rather than somebody wanting to cancel the meeting tonight?
Sounds like a plan. How about you, Mike? Do you think we need a meeting?
Pardon?
Do you think we need a meeting?
I don't know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Mike?
Well, I'm gonna be there though.
Oh, wow.
I would've been there. I guess we're not gonna meet, Mike. We're gonna cancel.
I'm not sure if I heard that one. Is there any plan to put the bulletin board back up?
Yes, um, I talked to the contractor yesterday and Don has gotten a new backer board. So we're, we're working on that, getting a date. Yeah, Judy?
Can we look into seeing if we can get a new one?
A new bulletin board?
Because one, it leaks and two, it's been tweaked, so it's not easy to open.
Okay.
And if we're gonna put in, if we're gonna put a new one up...
I know they're not cheap.
Well, then I guess we're putting the old one.
Well, if you wanna explore that, you know, we can do that administratively maybe, you know? If you find one and we can afford it.
Well, would it, do you have any idea while we're looking? Yeah? I have no idea.
I, I don't either, really tell you the, I'll bet you it's at least $500.
Oh, well, then we're not doing it.
Well, I'm just think, I'm thinking out loud. The good ones that are outdoors and weatherproof, they're not cheap. They're, they're good.
It's just that that one's so hard to open.
But you can look into it and if you wanna check and give us feedback.
We'll look into it, but we're probably not getting that.
Okay. But yeah, we're gonna try and get that back up soon. Um, CDBG, I think everybody received tonight's report. There's been no changes since last month. NODA, NODA does have a meeting this week. Um, it's their budget, uh, their annual budget meeting. And I expect I will be in attendance, God willing, and the sun rises. Um, Historical Study Committee, I have just flatlined on being able to do anything, Char, because of all the other stuff that's been going on. So I don't know what...
I've been busy too, but I have been doing some checking. And I did talk with Ron Campbell, uh, Friday. Ron had been in the hospital and I reached out to him for some help and he was not able to help at that time. So, um, there is a person coming out from Michigan State on the 28th of this month doing genealogy of a house at Addison Township Library. I want to go to that. Ron figures he'll come out for it too, if he can, and see if they have anything to add to what the historian from Oakland University had. And then hopefully my life will settle down just a teeny bit and I can get started on it. But, um, I, I do believe it's worthwhile. The other thing that I talked with Ron about is that there are some older persons who still are very knowledgeable of oral history of this town. And I asked one if he would help me when we start on these houses because he told me he can look at, say, your house and say, so and so lived here, so and so before them and so and so before them. He remembers most of the houses in this town. That would be a great benefit to us. And he is willing to come out. And what I asked Ron about was filming that. And he said, by all means, that's something we should do. So I don't know if I need to talk to the cable station or if we have to do our own thing, but I thought possibly I could talk to the cable station.
Yeah, they might loan us a camera.
Why, they, they, they have, let me put it this way. That's one of the values of having a community TV service. They're supposed to be able to do that. I don't want to borrow that camera. I'd really like somebody who knows what they're doing behind that camera. But if it's interesting enough, the cable station may want to have that for viewing too.
Yeah, that sounds like a good plan. Let me know if I can help in any way.
Okay, you can hold the camera.
Okay, well, are there any other comments or business to come before the council tonight? If not, um...
No correspondence?
No, I have nothing, no.
Okay.
That's basically it.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Bones, please say no. All right. Thank you, everybody, for attending.